...in your small communities are really got an advantage over the larger communities because they have, they carry the same vote.
They're vulnerable in the town.
Actually, they're stronger.
Yes, they are. And it seems to me it's not whether garbage is generated, garbage is generated in the town. So my point of view here is what I could suggest.
So 10 percent, excuse me, 10 percent, six villages have 10 percent of population.
Yes, and yet they have the majority of the vote. So here, can I make a first thought and then I'll give you a chance?
Sure.
The thought that I had, what we can do, we can do a motion to recommend the commission. That we must do. As for the other one, can you give me an opportunity to at least pitch our case tomorrow and at least be heard and try to see if there is a desire from the towns to maybe analyze the situation and try to figure out if there is a model that may be more fair than the ones I'm proposing. I mean, right now is maybe not.
Where does the county of Cardston sit with this?
The county of Cardston, they want a commission in the worst way and would have been better yesterday than tomorrow.
They're just under 15 percent.
Could we look at a situation where the commission, the body of the commission, the board says to Hillspring, Glenwood, the small villages, things like that, you, your population is going to be combined with your closest town. So the population based, you know, your vote population based on that situation. So if Hillspring and Glenwood grouped with Cardston, Raymond would take somebody like Sterling and the small communities there. Cardston would look at some of the neighboring villages.
It's very, very political, you know?
Oh, I know.
Absolutely, it is.
But I'm just wondering about this equalized, you know?
I don't know that you will ever get it equalized, but I think, I think equalized is what we remember right now, but I think it's not a fair system.
I'm just, you know, looking, you know, not just at population, but I'm looking at transfer stations. You know, who has transfer stations that, you know, the towns all have transfer stations. I think Glenwood and Hillspring, they share a transfer station between them. The county probably has more than one transfer station.
They have micro, micro transfer stations.
There's one out there by Jefferson. I'm sorry. A lot of county people do use.
They use ours.
Are a transfer. Does the blood reserve have a transfer station?
No.
There's no, there's no transfer station on the blood reserve.
They have one in Standoff.
Okay.
But the people local will use those.
Okay. And I'm also wondering about, you know, the blood reserve population, is this, I don't know, but does anyone know if this population of 8,143 is the entire blood reserve?
No, it is not.
It's a portion of the blood reserve?
It's about two-thirds of it because their numbers fluctuate between, well.
Well, that's what I'm wondering because they go all the way to Fort McLeod.
We hear sometime 10,000, sometime 12,000.
Yeah, but I'm just.
I do not know exactly what the numbers are. I accept that I have a population that is growing extremely rapidly.
Yeah, I just wanted.
And the last census may be not representative of what the actual numbers are.
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is if, is this supposed to represent the entire blood reserve because they, they go all the way to Fort McLeod, you know?
I think it is.
Because, you know, like with, with our EMS, you know, the county population is only considered the western half of the county. And so I'm thinking with the blood reserve, with our transfer, maybe we should, it should only be considered as half of the blood reserve, you know?
The numbers are based on the 2011 census. We listed at 3580, which was 2011 census. So it would be appropriate to assume it represents 2011 census. But when you talk to their counselors, they would talk anywhere 10,000, 12,000.
But is that 10,000 people or population getting, getting?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
Okay, so that's a question I will raise and we'll try to figure out the answer.
There's a couple of things here. There's one option I would recommend they just throw right out. This option four, board has a seven-member executive committee voted at the AGM. Well, I honestly, I think if this happened, the blood tribe would be right out of, they would be out of, they wouldn't even have a representative on there. And I don't think that would be fair at all. I think that that's one you just need to strike it out.
I think what we need to, we discussed those last time. We came up that maybe the status quo is what we wanted, but what I want, if the status quo is what's going to happen, we need to figure out how to subdivide the voting in order for we to be more representative on that issue. So if you.
Councilor Bangery's idea is not such a bad idea, you know, to team up some of the.
Those, those are conversations we'll have tomorrow and I will bring it up.
I think you should, but you know, quite frankly, when I look at option five, on paper, probably that's the fairest of them all, honestly.
Yeah, there is a lot of fairness in five, but there's a lot also of great concerns with that.
Mayor, this, this garbage issue and this transfer station issue is a mega issue. I mean, and it's, it's not going to be settled overnight. And I'm not wondering if we should, every community that's involved in this, get a committee together and we have a summit meeting and start to look at the whole scenario of everything that's going on. Instead of having one or two representatives to a meeting, how can those, that one or two representatives represent your community as top?
Well, essentially, the idea is that at council, at each council, that issue, those papers would have been discussed, a position taken. And tomorrow, they have asked for administration and elected official to be present. And I do not believe that tomorrow's are going to have an answer as to all the issues of. I think it's more a discovery, a think tank. I think that's more or less that. But where they're really adamant, they want to know something. For them to move forward, they need to know that the commission is what communities are willing to support. If they cannot go past that, the rest is irrelevant.
Well, if, I mean, I'm just concerned if time is of the essence, which I don't think it is, I think they really just want to resolve this in a reasonable amount of time, but they're not going to resolve this tomorrow.
No.
So you're going to be discussing some ideas, some recommendations and this stuff.
Yes.
And, and I kind of like Councilor Bangery's idea of having maybe put out there that we have a think tank. I mean, I really don't think it's fair that these smaller communities have such a strong voice because 10 percent of the people can beat on 90 percent.
No, totally, I agree with you. I agree with you.
My gut feeling is that that 10 percent, the most that they should have is two seats, two votes.
Essentially, what I really think needs to happen is that one discussion at the commission level deals with items that are really town issues.
Yeah.
Then a town should have the privilege to vote a certain way with a certain weight in comparison of the rural who don't have maybe the same issue. The rural should then make the decision as to what will be the solution to the problem because a rural will not see it the same way. By, by just the fact that geographically and population wise, they don't have the problem.
Yeah, well, you know, if you have to talk to the rural, they will have their own specific issues. And so let, let me just take an example. Suppose they're voting on requisitions and the towns, you know, have a good tax base. They vote to increase the requisition. Well, what does a little community do when they just don't have the money? They say, you know, we can't be outvoted by the towns to, you know, to give money that we don't have. So that would be an issue that, you know, that they, they would be quite concerned about. So there are, there are issues where they have some legitimate concerns and there are certainly issues where, where we have, you know, where the larger communities have legitimate concerns. So it has to be, you know, considered.
Essentially, what we need to do probably right now is have that motion approving the commission. And let's allow us with administration to bring forward the concerns we still have regarding the different model of voting and governance they are proposing.
Mayor, I hate to beat this to death, but I've been on three different councils and this, this has come up on all three councils.
Yeah, but we need, we need an action plan right now.
And it also came up on, on your council in 2010. When are they going to put this to bed and make some positive decisions?
What tomorrow's?
And that's why I say that we, I don't think tomorrow is a start, Mayor.
For the commission, it is. If they don't have that vote, they cannot proceed at all. The meeting, the meeting is over.
Well, then, then, then you start out from square one.
But no, you cannot start because what that meeting came from is the outcome of the studies that was done with the recommendation that were given with the, the review of the recommendation that was done by Raymond underscored.
That was that grant that we got, right?
Right. And so this is the outcome. So that is now proceeding with a recommendation and starting to, to accept the fact that the commission is the way to go, number one. And then to allow for exploration as to the governance model, which is what they have, and try to understand every item of that governance model that is proposed.
Right now, we're just an authority, right?
Right, but it means very little because as you know, the operating result, the parameters, the legal parameters of the authority. So that's the problem.
Okay, so Mayor, now your own words, try to understand. Now, if you don't have representation there from Hillspring or Glenwood or from Sterling, what's going to happen?
Well, it cannot proceed with a vote because everyone of the authority should be there. This is why.
Well, everybody should be there, but if they're not there.
They not have quorum?
They, yeah. You know, when you, when you have that, when Councilor Barnes read that, that they've got a 14, or 14-member, seven-member executive or something?
No, they have a quorum right now. It's 12, that's the existing model. But some of the regulations are different.
But I think, I think, let's proceed in order here. Are we willing to put a motion forward to recommend the commission as we had said coming out of the CCW?
We talked about one vote, one.
So, no, we, we had it lumped in the same motion. So.
Can we have that motion read or that recommendation, that from CCW? I'd like to hear that again.
It is right inside the minutes.
Okay.
Do you want to read it?
Motion from CCW moved by Mayor Cronin to recommend the council to have the authority move to become a commission and have one vote per member municipality. Please note that there is an enclosed document from the authority about the options before them. The mayor may have further input on this item prior to passing the motion. So that's what I said, it's one vote, one.
One immunity per.
That's what I was.
If you want to keep the motion this way, it's fine, but we're closing ourselves the, the potential.
That was the recommendation.
Yes, but we can't, it's not a motion, right?
No, that's, that's right.
You don't make the motion and you can change your recommendation to what you want.
Well, I'm thinking at this time, the, the motion would have to, it's still, it's still, there has to be a discussion there and it has to be, I guess, a, a majority vote there at the committee, at the, the meeting as to which model they're going to use. And you need to be strong on what your recommendation is. And I think that, I don't, I don't think that six small communities comprising of 10 percent of the people should have that much authority.
But Councilor, the item here is we need a motion to approve the commission. Let's start with that.
Oh, I have no problem with that.
Let's start with that. That's what we need.
Yeah, I.
Let's make separate motion.
Yeah, well, I, I'll, I'll make the motion that we vote with them to establish a commission as opposed to the authority. Simple as that.
That, okay, the, the motion is then to approve.
The commission to be set up.
The establishment.
Establishing the commission.
The establishment of commission for CMRSWA.
Right.
Simple.
Yep.
All in favor? Thank you. Jeff, would you please?
On the second topic, my guess is, now I don't know this for sure, but I would suggest that what would happen is if there's some consensus at this meeting that you attend tomorrow, that they would then draft the bylaws of the soon-to-be commission, which would have to be ratified by each individual council.
Yeah.
So you'll definitely have many more kicks at this, I would suggest.
Yes.
That there's going to be some formal ratification by each community prior to everything being, the board of directors being determined.
Okay, so if I understand well, tomorrow representing this council is we do not feel that one vote per member is proper?
Right.
Okay, so one vote per member is, thank you, one vote per member is an issue and that we want to find a model that is more fair. We're not looking for inequitable, but we're looking for fair, that allows to address rural issues and allows to address urban issues and not lumped in the same vote.
Just a comment, and you could use it.
Thank you.
I like what you've just said, Jeff. It makes sense that once the commission is established, that they will get together and have each council discuss and come up with their ideas. And I think with 12 councils getting together, there will be, there'll be some consensus, consensus in there. We'll get to see a, a kind of a picture of each community and what they're thinking and, and we'll be able, I'm pretty sure we'll be able to come to an equitable and, well, maybe not so equitable, but fair.
Equitable, one vote is equitable.
Yeah, yeah.
That is not fair.
But it'll come to, it'll come to a fair solution somewhere along the line. And if each council has the opportunity to have a say, then that's the way to go. And I think that'll work.
All right, so I will represent the town with those, with those.
Yep.
Those things.
I have my book.
Thank you. All right, let's go seven of the business, 7A. Here, I have, I have some council. I'm okay. All right.
I always have pens, I get them any you may.
So this one isn't to discuss. So Jeff, would you please address a little bit the way you kind of present those AUMAs?
Very simply, those are individual itineraries. So they have your hotel confirmations, they have your, the addresses, a map, all that stuff, and a conference itinerary. So they're all the same except for Councilor Bangery and Barfus, who have the hotel room there.
Okay.
Other than that, they're all the same.
You mean Barnes, not Barnes?
Barnes, yes.
So for the, for the privilege.
Still call me Councilor Barnes. Or we're Western?
Yes, we're the Western.
Okay, I thought we were getting a different one this year. Well, it's all right, I'm okay, but.
To help the gallery understand what's going on, AUMAs is an annual conference where elected officials go and are trained and are updated by government officials as to the latest policies or directions that the government is going to. And then we make recommendations that come from different municipalities and we vote on recommendations that are then brought to different government committee to be discussed and see if the province are willing to make changes to their policy or directions. So essentially, it's an important meeting for us to go. It's about the only time we take our wives along with us.
West, Weston.
Our spouse.
I haven't been to Edmonton, Tamey, of course, I don't know.
Yeah.
The only other thing I need to know is generally we've done a dinner collectively at AUMAs. And either the fifth or the sixth, my recommendation is the sixth, the night of the sixth, there's a lot of different activities and sweets and things going on a bit. So one, is that okay date wise? Does everyone want to do that? And two, is everyone traveling with their spouse? So I know, is there anyone not, I should say that I know when I'm booking.
Okay, we don't know.
I'll have to find out.
Two of them, but.
My wife will be coming with me this time.
Councilor Bangery?
Yes.
Councilor Enman?
Yes.
Councilor?
And Dawn's coming?
Yeah, okay.
So I'll book for everyone and one. And does the sixth work, the evening at six?
Yes.
Okay.
Question on the sixth. I know that there hasn't been time when we've like taken in a dinner theater on that night. Is that something that we?
No, we're not doing that.
I don't want to do that anymore.
We're going to do a regular dinner.
Just go for dinner.
If you want to go too.
Did we go to a Japanese place one time? Was that in Edmonton or Calgary? What was in Edmonton? Because remember they were doing the, the arena, they were just starting to build the arena there when we went there.
Well, Japanese is not the best restaurant for my husband, but whatever. I think a nice restaurant in the west is fine.
Nice restaurant, the hotel is planned and we don't have to take a car.
Yeah, you know, the nice food travel, the better it is for all of us, honestly.
That's fine. Okay. I think that's what we did last year, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was nice.
And it's fine.
Yeah.
Someone might be interested in joining us?
Yeah.
If you guys are interested.
Oh, absolutely. It'd be nice to have.
Try to see.
Mary and her crew along.
If they're interested, maybe.
She usually not like to go to the dinner theater.
No, they're not going there this year.
Okay. Do we have a, is everybody okay with that?
They only have, they only have a counselor or two going there.
Well, why don't Jeff just give Mary a call and see if they are? We'd love to have an opportunity.
Sure. Okay, thank you. All that is settled. Let's go on to eight council counts. We will take a break in a little while. Is that okay?
Do we want to discuss resolution?
Oh, so sorry. Yes, that's all. Okay. Here is what I am wondering.
That's starting to be a big issue there.
But we already have that in.
I know, we need to.
Anyway, can we, do you want to put it in, in next council meeting? Okay, we will. All right, so the AUMA resolutions, I read through them all. I don't know if you did. If you haven't, we could maybe start talking about our own. And if you're interested in having a little bit more time to really make sense of some of them, if you need more time, let me know. We could then bring them to the next meeting.
You have a month to determine your council's position on it, so it's not a panic.
So that's what I'm wondering.
I haven't had time to read them all, read it all.
Okay, so do you want us to reschedule that for next meeting? Would you feel more comfortable? Maybe let's go look at ours, okay? And I think it's important to look at ours because it has taken a little bit of a twist from last time I showed it to you.
Resolution 201684?
Which page?
201684.
Give me the page.
Page 59.
Okay.
Thank you, that's what I needed. Okay. So when we, when we submitted that resolution, as you knew, we were, made it 31st and we were on a wagon pretty bad. So the resolution I had written on our behalf was a little bit lengthy and of course, we did not know the outcome of the government position on eliminating.
Red space.
The defined, defined collection for the local registry agent. We did not know what, what's going to happen. From there on, we kind of found out what happened and we worked really hard with our local registry agent and with back and forth, we kind of streamlined the resolution according to AUMA wishes, that it be more representative of the issue at a province level.
At a broad scope.
Yeah, so that's what we did. And the resolution now is definitely more streamlined and.
That's what we're looking at now?
Yes. The background there stayed the same. What I can tell you that from the time we started this big resolution and discussion, much good has came out of it. The mayors and real supported our position and right up from southern Alberta to the west border, right up to east border. So we had total support of all those mayors and real, which was great.
Because all those communities all have their own registries, don't they? Remember Raymond of Branson?
And so what happened, although we kind of had the sense that the government was going to eliminate the collection of fees for.
The fines?
For fines, we also knew that there was a possibility of further cuts to the point where the registry would not be able to survive in, in our town. And that became an issue. So the way we did our work allowed for the overall big association of local registry to have communication with the government, which never happened before. And there now, they have been heard, which is already one step forward. We want them to hear them even louder. And with having that resolution, AUMA then will go back for opposition. I just heard from our local agent that that resolution was presented to the Calgary, the city of Calgary, and they are willing to support it.
Awesome.
And I thought that's amazing.
Mayor, as being the mayor, are you going to present our resolution and are you going to speak to it?
That was a good question.
We need a two-minute speech.
I would imagine I could, but I like the voice of Councilor P. Roy better. Except I would give him the speech.
Yeah. I, I have to agree wholeheartedly. I really enjoy listening to him because his voice resonates up there well and people hear it.
Yeah, I have an accent, not good.
I certainly don't want to be the one doing it.
But I would, I would suggest that.
At least you read it.
I would write the two-minute back.
Yes, I, I would like to compliment you on, on the way you have crafted this resolution. It is very, it is very well written.
Well, we worked hard and you can say, Jeff, because it took two heads at the end to really streamline it.
Two heads.
Okay, so thank you very much for your support. So maybe we leave it at that.
I'll put it on the next agenda.
Take the time to read through them. There are some that are wholeheartedly supportive and some honestly that are so muddled that I really think we shouldn't even touch.
I thought maybe she had some questions about, you know, but.
Some, some have a background that doesn't fit the resolution and I'm thinking, gee.
Well, that, you know, that's what I like about when we all get together as a body and these resolutions are presented, it makes a lot more sense at the time when I'm listening to these things and then I can, then I can decide after I've read them over whether or not that they actually do make some sense. Because when that two-minute speech is given, they either have their, you know, their information gathered properly or they just don't have it and people are, people are going to see through that. They always do.
Well.
Not every resolution gets a positive vote, you know? And it needs to make sense to everybody.
There is one. There is one that when you read through, I can't remember which town it was. It was a small village. And the village had an issue with one of those type of item we discussed earlier, which was trained a level-one water operator.
Yes.
And they really now want the government to, because they lost that worker. Bicycle, yeah.
There it is, right here.
And to sell us that worker to another town because he was trained and went somewhere else. And for them, retention is an issue. And so now they want the government to allow towns and villages to have operators that are not certified such a high level. And honestly, I cannot support that.
No way.
There has been too many issues, even Canada, with water that is not safe to drink. And I want a level-one operator to have my water-free of pathogen day after day. I would never go along with that resolution. But what they need, in my point of view, is a policy at the town level.
They need a policy, yeah.
As we're trying to craft those, anyways.
Do we call that Watergate?
Call it what you want, but that one to me is a red danger.
I understand where they're coming from.
Oh, I understand.
I totally understand that they're frustrated that they don't have a trained person, but they're grasping at straws and they're playing with fire and it's very dangerous.
You know, there may be other solutions to that.
I just need a policy first of all.
If their constituents understood this, would they be, I think, ticked off?
They may have to be sharing, you know, sharing an operator between.
Two communities neighboring something like.
Anyway, it will be up to them to figure out their solution. But the solution that proposed to me is very dangerous.
Yeah.
Very, very dangerous. I would support it. Okay, next one is the financial report. And we need a motion to approve the financial report. Maybe you want to go, maybe you want to go to it. Because there's some numbers that you might be questioning and wondering, what are those inflops and why are they there? So maybe, since I have the answers.
It's nice that somebody has the answers.
Well, ask questions.
You have to tell us the question.
This is the balance sheet.
We're looking at first, you have the way of your balancing.
Yeah, you're looking at that. So if you look at the financial assets, you will see the cash and temporary investment. There is 1.8 million over last year at the same time. So that should raise an eyebrow, right? So essentially, I understand that that was cash from earlier grants that have been lumped under cash and temporary investment. And there are investments short term inside there.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that 2.3 million, is that part of the river grant that we got?
Yeah, partially. A portion of it, a portion.
We had two grants that reported to us quite early. One was the resiliency grant, which is the intake work, out of the intake. And we got 600,000 of the rest of the creek work early that they just sent without, we didn't even know was coming. So when we hit January one, we were sitting on quite a bit of cash in the bank. And so it's just sitting in basically thirty, sixty, ninety, a revolving GICs until we need to use it.
Doesn't mean that we're rich, okay? That's the idea.
That's why I asked the question. Because people, when they watch this on the TV, they're going to wonder why. And that's why I was bringing it up. Because we are spending that money to fix the creek problem and the water rate gain problem.
Exactly.
So once those funds are spent, that figure's going to look a lot smaller.
Oh, totally.
Should be zero.
Yeah, it should almost be zero.
So then the taxes receivable, it's always a concern of mine to see tax receivable. But knowing the way a town operates, it's difficult to think that by September, we don't have a small balance of tax that are overdue. Right now, if you can see in comparison of last year, we are in a much better position. We have a certain amount of taxes that are due. But the next penalty time is in September. So there is no incentive for people who have not paid their taxes to pay it in July.
They'll wait for the last.
They're going to wait September when the next increment comes of overdue length.
I have another question to Jeff. Are you finding that more people are signing up on the TIP program?
Yeah, definitely. It's a good thing, but we continue to get more people subscribe to it. I don't know the percentage, I'm sorry, I just don't.
Yeah.
But yes, we have, it continues to grow and that really helps us cash flow. Because we have money coming in every month for twelve months for all of it coming in.
I've been talking, I've had other people that have asked about that and they say it's so hard on them to pay that taxes at the end of the year. And I suggested, well, why don't you do this? And they didn't realize it was available. And so I know that I've mentioned that and some people come in. I do it the same way. And it's really nice at the end of the year to get your tax notice and say you owe forty-six dollars and thirty-five cents as opposed to fourteen hundred dollars.
And you have to send to a one-month reprieve if you start again the next.
And it's nice. So there again, the public needs to be aware that they can get involved with the TIP program, which would help them budget their money better.
That is something else we could put at the open house.
Yes, just what I was going to say. That we have an education program for the TIP program.
Yes.
Actually, a question regarding the TIP program. The way it stands now, there's only one time that you can start the TIP program, which is right next time. I just wonder if we could explore some way, you know, for people to.
Intake means?
Jump onto that program, you know, at other times of the year.
But it's calculated.
You'd have to kind of figure out where they're at and.
It'll be computer programmed.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, just because.
But it's pro-rated in them.
Yeah, you'd have to pro-rate it in some way. But lots of times, you know, people, you know, they're faced with a big tax bill and stuff like that. And then all of a sudden, okay, I want to get on the TIP program. But, or maybe they're not aware of the TIP program at that time of the year and it comes up. And then, you know, you know how people are.
Wouldn't it be better than to have a proper education of a public who is still not aware of that? Try to do a little bit of that and then live it as the intake as it is today, in a sense that it's much easier to calculate for administration without adding a burden to their workload, honestly. I think education would be very important.
I think Counselor Creed has got a real good direction there. When you consider our economy, our workforce now and things like that, you know, somebody is regularly making payments and doing a great job, all of a sudden he gets laid off or loses his job. Somehow, if he could get onto that TIP program, I don't know, mid-year or something like that, it might ease the burden. And, you know, we've recognized these situations in the past. But, you know, our economic climate, we may want to consider something like that.
Jeff, isn't it possible for people who are not on a TIP program to come to the office and decide to make payment, et cetera? That's what I think.
It just doesn't pay interest though.
It's one percent.
One percent is not going to make us rich, honestly.
So that might be part of the education to show them.
That I can do it regardless.
They could create their own TIP program in a sense.
Right, by budgeting.
By budgeting, start bringing their payments on a monthly basis. I mean, it's not quite as convenient as having it just automatically deducted from your account.
They can pay online.
They can do that too.
So maybe that's a little bit of education, because obviously we don't even know other groups or something. Okay, the next one that I found interesting was the long-term investments in the financial assets. And you can see there again, there is about a million dollar difference, 1.48 million dollar more. And that is represent money that has been reserved. And it represents also a newer of accounting, that a new vehicle of investment that is given to towns through, what's the name of the investment group we use? Woodcandy, yeah, right. And that vehicle allows for long-term investment without penalty if we take the money out. So that's what is the story here. So let's go to liabilities. I'm only talking about the area where I had questioned myself, okay? So account payables and accruals. If you can see, in comparison of last year, we have a much higher amount. In comparison of the year before, it's even higher because before that, there was no line for that item. And it's because the accounting was done differently. In the past, when there were bills that came regarding a project, those bills were not entered as an account payable. They were kept together altogether. And when the project was finished, they were inputted the day the project was finished and the payment was dispersed right there on that. So in other words, it was an in and out, it was a cash transaction. Right now, what it shows, when the bill comes regarding the project, that bill is entered. So right now, we do have payables, doesn't mean that we don't have the money to pay them. It just means that they are there. Ask Jeff, is that 600,000 dollar current? Yes, it is current. So it is, will be paid within thirty days of the bill's being received.
So of that account payable, that new breaker that we purchased, is that part of that or is that already paid? So this is just current stuff that's going to be paid right away?
For the creek.
Like the creek?
For the creek, for the asphalt, for all that stuff.
The roads, the sewer that we've done, just completed? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay, the next one, I was just curious because I couldn't remember the end of the contract we have with the bank. The long-term debt, which is there because we had the St. Mary's.
Outfall.
Outfall, okay. It was a sewer line. All right, so this one, that's what I thought you would ask me. I have the answer. In five years, 2021. Okay. Okay, so right now, we are able to pay a lot more on a principal. The interests are pretty well taken care of. The last line that obviously has a big bulge is the unrestricted surplus under accumulated surplus. Out of a sudden, it shows four million dollars. And last year, we had two million at the same time. So what happened there, it's truly a budget that's going to be spent by the end of December of this year, representing all the future needs we have to do repairs, creek remedial, and who knows what else. That's the two million dollar.
In, Mary, in our long-term debt, are we still got riders on our water and our sewer? We had riders to our, we don't have any riders?
I have to look, I'm sure I don't think so.
I don't know why we should have them.
Well, at one time, one council, I think, was going to put a rider on for the water intake line.
I do not remember.
If I recall, the intake had a rider, but the intake's been paid for a few years.
Paid, okay, so.
Yeah, this is the outfall line.
Any rider on the outfall.
I'll check.
This is the outfall line project that was approved previous council. And I remember that very well. Okay, all right, so I need a motion to approve.
One question.
Oh, go ahead.
So the unrestricted surplus, does that reflect the same money that is shown in cash and temporary investments? Is that separate or is this?
So this is an unrestricted surplus as of January or July 31st. So anything unspent in 2016's budget currently shows as a surplus. That number will diminish as we reach December to zero. So we have a 14 million dollar budget or whatever our budget is. Right now, we still have 2 million dollars roughly, more or less, left in that budget.
So the surplus actually does include the cash that we have on hand?
No. It's simply what we are under budget for what we budgeted for the whole year. So we budgeted whatever. I guess operationally, we don't have a 14 million operational. So we have a 6 million dollar operational budget. We have currently spent about four of it.
Well, this is what I'm saying, this represents everything we haven't spent?
Yes, correct. So if I were to give you the budget today, which you can actually see on the income statement he gives that, that's the total at the end of the income statement. That's how much we haven't spent compared to budget.
So when we spend that cash?
It will reduce out of the accumulated.
So it really is in the same, I mean, that the cash is unspent?
Yes, true.
When cash goes down, the surplus is going to reduce correspondingly.
Counselor, if you don't mind to go along with what Jeff said, just go into your next table, revenues and.
Income.
Income, your income statement. Look at the very end where it says surplus slash deficit. And you will see the 2 million dollar there. Okay, so that 2 million dollars that is bulging at this point is reflected right there. All right, so this is much, that's so much for that. We need a motion to approve the financial.
Make a motion to approve our financial statements.
Thank you. Are you in favor? Thank you. And I think from time to time, it doesn't hurt.
I'd also like to put out kudos to our financial director and also to our administrator for the job well done when you consider our economic climate.
Well, we are on budget, let's put it this way. And that's a good, a good place to be. Thank you so much, Counselor. All right, no other committees and report at this point. Counselor, do you want to take a break at this point?
I do. Mayor, we finished the two pieces of correspondence, then we go to camera.
That's true.
Yeah, we have plenty of.
That's only going to take a couple minutes.
It takes thirty seconds.
All right, let's do that.
Under eleven, you will see the tunnel table. The tunnel table, if you remember, we gave them a letter of support for doing a study on recyclable, et cetera. That has been approved by, I would say, the majority of the towns and villages. They did a presentation on mayors and reeves. That presentation is exactly what you have right here in your document. What is interesting is that that study was also based on the less bridge studies that had been done by the university. And it goes a little further with it. What they're telling us is that in order for these recyclable, that plant for recyclable to be viable, they need as anchor the tunnel less bridge and the tunnel medicine hat in order to get the proper volume, in order to make it feasible. So they still have to work with those two towns to make sure that there will be support because the less bridge studies showed that less bridge alone could not be viable, it was a money losing proposition. So because they did not have enough tonnage in order to recoup on the market the cost of putting a recycling plant. So what they have asked us at the mayors and reeves is if we were in favor to carry on with the grant money they have, a study to try to do the phase two of the study, which is to look at infrastructure. Right now, they only showed us that the model is viable and there is money that could be made and costs recoup within five to 10 years depending on the town and the tonnage that we are bringing to that facility. So there they're known with a very, very conservative. So, there they know with a very, very conservative estimate of the lowest of market price for recyclable and with the highest cost of transportation, they have used those kind of model, those parameters for their model. They know it's viable. So, now they want to go one step further as trying to figure out what a facility would cost in time of infrastructure. So, I gave a consent to carry on with the model. It costs us nothing. So, I thought you would approve of doing a further investigation. It does not mean that we have to put any money. So...
I guess one of the questions I have, maybe it's a concern too, is how would that affect our local handicap association? And, I mean, that's a project for them for money-making to run their operations. And I would need to see...
Yeah, I think we would...
Us pull the plug on our local people who work so hard. And that's one of their major fundraisers, isn't it?
Yeah.
There is that question at the local level, no doubt. And we need to look at all the possibilities. And we need to try to understand what can be recycled that can be beyond and above what they're offering. We're talking much greater tonnage here.
Yeah. Actually, yeah, I was reflecting the same question that Counselor Barnes has. When we wrote our letter of support, if I recall that we had that caveat or that question that we didn't want to lose the funding that our handicap association receives for their work. And I'm wondering if we ever got a response or did we ask for a response on that?
I don't know.
It was simply preliminary that they agreed here.
Right.
We're not committed to anything.
Like I said, right now, there's no commitment. Even in saying, yes, carry on spending the money towards infrastructure. We got to have a sense of the overall picture before we can really make a decision. Because stocking money is not, it doesn't come cheap.
So, the other question that we directed to Jeff, do you have any idea how many other communities have handicap associations who are doing recycling like ours? I'm sure that there are. I know Lethbridge does.
Lethbridge does.
For sure.
Yeah.
And they'll sash there.
I don't think they do that.
I'm sure that all the communities have all this kind of something to do with that. And we also need to understand the greater project and then buy into it or not.
Yeah.
Okay? And the last item correspondence is actually a fairly interesting item. It's a letter from Jameson Beverly Hansen regarding their house on Second Street.
Seventh Avenue.
Second Avenue.
Seventh Avenue.
First, the Seventh Avenue?
Seventh Avenue.
Seventh Avenue. Where did I get Second Street from? Oh, I was talking about that, guys.
Oh, I see. They're referring to people.
Okay. So, essentially, what they're trying to say is that they're willing to connect. Right now, they are on a septic field. And they would love to connect their home to the sewer line.
However, this is after the fact, Mayor.
Yeah, but let me explain that. And they also would like to connect their water to have a new connection.
Are they on water, town water right now?
Yes.
Right.
They're just looking at new...
Essentially, what Counselor Bantry is saying is it's after the fact. That is a very interesting thing. What they were saying is, well, you offered the possibility of hooking up to residents on...
On Second Avenue.
Second Avenue. Yeah, that's where Second Avenue comes.
Yeah.
And to hook up while we had the trenches open. And I don't know if some people took advantage of it, but that was the opportunity. And they say we would like the same opportunity, except here's a difference. Every taxpayer, landowner, on Second Avenue has already paid for their sewer line.
Exactly.
So, here, they would pay for an upgrade to the sewer line. In that case, there is no sewer line. So, you would consider it as if it was a new home.
You mean, the infrastructure is not there in place?
Correct.
This will be a brand-new...
So, my point of view, I can see the water hook up.
Because it's already there.
It's already there. But for the sewer, I would say it doesn't really fit the same parameter, the same situation as what we have on Second Avenue. So, I would prefer administration to say to those people, but you have to decide, yes, for the water, but you have to pay the full cost for the sewer.
Mayor, we've got, is it Mountain View Industry...
Estates.
Mountain View Estates right across the road that they have sewer, right? And they have a large mainline sewer. Could that property...
Hook into that?
Hook into that?
Jeff?
So, I put this on because they directed it to council, but we're dealing with it administratively. There's sewer line in the road, that's not the issue. The bylaw states when you connect to the sewer for the first time, you pay a connection fee.
You have to pay.
Because you pay into the overall infrastructure. Hansons have never paid that connection fee because they never had sewer line into the system. However, on water, they have paid a connection fee because they're connected to the infrastructure. So, for water, we'll just bill them costs.
Yeah.
And that's fine. And they just need to pay the connection fee on sewer.
That's what I think is fair.
Well, that's simple. If they haven't paid like everybody else has, then they have to pay that fee.
I don't remember, $3,000?
$3,000.
And that includes all the costs, like the transport, labor and the piping and everything like that.
3,200.
Yeah, maybe 3,200, Counselor. I'll deal with it. If they want to appeal that to council, they can. I just put it to your attention in case, so you're aware of what is written to you.
I believe it is a proper, the proper way to handle that. Okay, so, we need to have a motion to go and...
No, I mean, you don't need a motion to go and water. You have to just take care of it.
I'll take care of it.
Okay. So, we need to recess.
Yeah, and then we go on camera.
Okay.
I'll make motion to recess for five minutes.
All in favor? And then we will go on camera after that. And it will be under 271 AB3 in order to discuss a contract. Okay? So, at this point, the gallery is asked to. Thank you very much.